Go out in the hallway, she can hear it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Greetings everyone. Thanks for attending a special meeting tonight to talk about a huge issue concerning the safety of our children. In not only Hope Mills, but in all the municipalities within Cumberland County. My call or meeting to order tonight, please rise. Please rise and face our nation's colors. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Before I get into the introduction, I want to recognize the important folks that are with us tonight. And I want to start with the superintendent of Cumberland County Schools, and that would be Dr. Marvin Conley. Followed is Dr. Kevin Coleman, Associate Superintendent for Auxiliary. That's his slides up there, and he's going to be presenting those tonight as we kick off a conversation. And that's pretty much where we're going to go tonight. We're going to have a, we're going to have a conversation. We're going to have some Q and A, and let's talk about this, of how we're going to solve it, how we're going to address it, because the safety of our kids is paramount. That is what we're talking about tonight. And I feel, let me get through the introductions and I'll continue. Let me get through this. Dr. Karen Atkins, Southview High School Assistant Principal is here. Nathan Warple, Vice Chair for Cumberland County School Board is here. Larissa Perkins, Seaway Collier Elementary School Principal is here. Eric Bradley, Seaway Collier Assistant Principal and the Institute for Community Leadership, ICL Chair is here. I served with Eric on the ICL Board. Lee Sam Crawford, Rockfish Elementary School Principal is here. Sean O'Connor, Southview Middle Principal is here. Kim Brayden, Chief of Police City of Fayetteville is here. Marvin Lakeman, Town of Spring Lake Alderman is here. Francis Jackson, House State Representative from District 45 is here. Did I leave anybody out? The names I just called, if you notice, just about all seven of our schools in this district in Hope Mills, as affected by this letter, are present here tonight representing their students.
Deanna Jones, our Chair.
Ah, Deanna Jones, Chair, I'm glad your name wasn't on here. Chair of Cumberland County School Board. So we've got the school board, we've got the superintendent, we've got the associate, we've got majority of all of our principals or representatives from our school systems or hall president's room, we have chief of police from City of Fayetteville, and we've got Spring Lake. That tells us that tonight, we're talking about something that's important. Because I feel like the safety of our kids, given this letter that we just got nine days ago, our kids are on the wall of Alabama. And that's how I feel. I'll say that because I know the importance of what the SRO is in our schools. I know firsthand what that is and what their duties are, because I witnessed it as I teach for FTCC, a college business class at Jack Brit. I see every day that I am in that high school, the relationship that the kids and the school has with the SRO. They're peacekeepers, they're counselors, they're role models, they're protectors. And for their presence to be in the school, the kids know that they, one, are safe, two, they have somebody they can talk to. So I know exactly, and I'm passionate about it, because I'm an educator. Mayor Potem, Dr. Kenwanna McCray is not with us, she is in Japan, she is there with some students from FTCC, and she'll be back, they're leaving tomorrow morning, so that's why we have a vacant chair. She's not here tonight, but she'll be back. Coming in the door, I think. Coming in the door is State Senator Val Applewhite. Chancellor, you want to say anything as town manager before we?
Hello everyone, I definitely want to commend our school officials, our state representative, our house representatives, our municipal employees at other jurisdictions for coming out. When you look around this room, and you see the people here today, this tells you that this is something important. But I personally would like to acknowledge our mayor and our board, because here in Hope Mills, we take leadership seriously. And we are here meeting with our city officials and our school officials, so we can actually take a leadership role in figuring out a solution to this problem. And so I commend our board, I commend our elected officials for taking the bull by the horns and getting ahead of this, and us all working together to try to, like you said, find a solution, because our kids are something, that's the most precious commodity that we have. And so I definitely want to acknowledge everyone for coming out this evening, and I'm looking forward to a very fruitful conversation that would yield itself to something that would be beneficial to the children and citizens of Hope Mills.
Thank you Chancellor. The way we're going to roll it tonight is that we're going to have the presentation by Dr. Kevin Coleman, he's going to present the slides, then we're going to go into some Q and A. And then depending on where the time is, we may suspend the rules and allow some public comments to be part of that Q and A tonight, because this is a community conversation. It's about all of us that's in this room, and it's about all of our kids and parents that are not in this room tonight. Leadership is the courage to take on hard issues. We have that courage tonight by taking this issue on that we just learned about May 21st in a letter from the Sheriff's Department. That is clearly stated to us that effective 1 July of 2024, they will no longer assign traffic control officers or SROs to any of our seven schools within the Town of Hope Mills. That also extends to the municipality of Spring Lake. It also extends to the City of Fayetteville. That effective July 1st, there will be no coverage for the new school year that starts in August. That's not a whole lot of time. I want to be clear when I say this, that's not a whole lot of time to have some plan in place when our kids get off of school buses and start their year in August. Their safety is so paramount, especially in a climate that we live in today. Look at the amount of shootings and violence that happens at schools. And one thing that I want to emphasize is that any of these situations that we hear about schools and other communities and other states, where you know something, that situation can happen right here in our school. At any time. We don't know when a situation will occur, but we have to prepare ourselves for some situations that do occur. That SRO and the resource officers and the control, the traffic control folks that walk kids across the road, you know how important that is for kids across roads, especially in a very congested town like Hope Mills? It is extremely important. But I'm going to say something that, I get passionate about this, so I'm just going to say, I'm just going to say it without a stop. I wish we had more better time, I wish it was a better plan, I wish that we would have known about this three or four months ago, because tonight, here we are at almost the last day of May, and we only have June, July, and half of August to figure it out. To figure out and have a plan in place for August coming. I just, the timing was poor. I don't know why the timing, I don't know anything behind this letter that came down municipality on May 21st, I don't know why it came this late, I don't know what's behind that, but I do know this, that if we have this community conversation tonight, and I welcome more community conversations within our municipalities, and we can figure this out together and have a really good plan for our kids starting in August, but that discussion has to start here tonight. Gavin, you ready? All right.
Thank you for having us this evening, and thank you for taking some time to hear the presentation. I'm fine. Mayor Bellflower, you hit the nail on the head when you talked about our SROs, you talked about the relationships and the protectors in the school, and the men and women that serve as our school resource officers in our schools now do a fabulous job doing that. This is something that is extremely important to everybody, obviously, like has been well mentioned, and you can imagine from the school system as well, that we're just so grateful that we have groups that will come together on behalf to rally around our children, so I just want to say thank you for that, thank you for being here tonight. I'd like, I have a presentation that'll just take a few minutes, did it this morning, and I think it'll frame my references to this general information and it'll frame the conversation for today, so. Basically, our school resource officers and crossing guards are employees of the Cumberland County Sheriff. I actually presented this this morning to the school board, and I took the time this morning to just kind of state for the public to understand, we understand how law enforcement is, who hires them and who enforces that, but, you know, for the public to see, when you go in, if I have a child that goes to Jack Brit and I'm not affiliated with governmental agencies or the school system, and I walk in and I see an officer there, I may feel like that officer is hired by the school system and overseen by the school system. The currently, presently, the school resource officers are employees of the Cumberland County Sheriff, and all aspects of the SROs and the crossing guards are entirely managed by the Sheriff's Office. And so on May 21st, the school system received the letter at the same date that Hope Mills and Spring Lake and Fayetteville received the letter as well. From the Cumberland County Sheriff stating that effective July 1st, dead men and crossing guards will all be assigned to schools in unincorporated areas of Cumberland County. Currently, this is what we have from the sheriff, we have 34 school resource officers, 13 of them in high school, 17 of them in middle school, and currently we have four elementary. Now, we have 15 vacancies, so we have 19 slots, but can only fill four, sheriff can only fill four for the duration of the year. That's an obvious, that's obviously spreading it too thin, when you look at each officer has 13 schools that they're taking, so then you're reactionary instead of proactive, and we always try to be proactive instead of reactionary. After July 1st, the sheriff will provide 12 resource officers. It breaks down, and I need the backup too, the 98 crossing guards, a lot of them didn't speak to that, that's across, so we have 87 schools and 98 crossing guards, obviously some schools have one crossing guard, we see a bunch of them, so. I'm sorry. Gentlemen, yeah, I'm sorry. So after, after that, I'm going to actually go to this, and we're going to talk about this. It's fine, I'm sorry. These are the schools that are in the City of Fayetteville, and they're listed here. And so each one of those schools would be, the sheriff is saying that these are the schools in the City of Fayetteville that they will not have officers in. There are seven, as we've already mentioned, in Hope Mills, you've got Southview High School, Southview Middle, Hope Mills Middle, Seaway Collier, Rockfish, Cumberland Mills, and Ed Ball. And those are, and then Spring Lake has three as well, so that's just the standard of kind of where we're at across the board. The next step for us, and again, this was something that we went into this morning with our board, is we have that meeting on June 6th scheduled, where everybody comes together, obviously Hope Mills will be there, but that's when we're coming together. And then in abundance of caution, we're going to put out an RFP to evaluate outside security options, because at this point, we don't have the luxury, I don't have the luxury, we don't have the luxury of waiting until June 6th. Hopefully, we put out an RFP that we never utilize any of the services on RFP, but we have to look at outside security guards, these will be unmanned security guards with no arrest authority. So, you know, I mean, it's, we're at the point where we're not going, we're going to take every, every avenue we can to make sure that our students are safe, so we're going to put out an RFP to evaluate our options, and we're obviously going to continue to work collaboratively with Fayetteville, Hope Mills, Spring Lake, and sheriff, because he will, has agreed for the cover of the schools that he's agreed to cover. For us, I also wanted to mention too, August, school does start in August, but we have year-round school that starts July 15th. So it's 15 days after we were notified that we're no longer going to have, we've got schools opening. And so, again, this was just, it was time for questions, it really was just a brief overview of just, this is where we're at, this is information that you kind of already knew, but hopefully it'll get the conversation started today, and I thank you again for having us, and we're willing to answer any questions or be part of meeting discussion at your place.
Okay, and we'll open up questions from the board?
Mayor, I would have a question.
Okay, Ms. White.
I was under the impression that our state tax dollars covered some of this that the sheriff's department pays out. Am I wrong in thinking that?
Currently, we pay, the school system pays out of our budgeted money that we have, we pay 100% of our high school SROs and 50% of our middle schools, and then we have a 41 match on elementary schools, but we do, I mean, we fund half, the school system funds half of the middle school and all of the high schools, so it does come from our, a lot of that comes from our schools.
And the state, the state only combines a map, 88,000 dollars per high school SRO. All other funding is local budget, so only 88,000 from the state, but in comprehensive type.
Thank you sir. As for me, I'm used to working with children, being active with the youth program for so long. We can't put a price tag on a kid or any person, I guess you can if you have skills. But I'm anxious to get into this conversation and see what we can do or can't do, whichever the case may be. Finance officers attend this meeting tonight. Jerry, thank you for being here, because this is all kind of new to us, we haven't had the fund, money for crossing guard or school office yet, but they do come in handy. My daughter, or my granddaughter, had a gun taken away from a guy sitting next to her at Southview Astro last week, so there is no price on life of any of us who were hit by a car or something happens inside the confines of the school. But I'm glad to be here tonight, and I'm glad to represent Hope Mills, and we'll see where this conversation takes us. Thank you sir.
Okay, Commissioner White, go ahead. Commissioner Swol.
I don't want to like kill the messenger, because ultimately, yeah.
I'm okay.
Okay, so it's like, why are we the ones that have to come up with the solution? You know, the sheriff's department are the ones that had the contract, they failed, that's a leadership failure that drops the ball, why are we trying to pick up the ball? Because then they're going to point the fingers at us that if we don't, you know, make their children safe, then we fail that. So why, it's, why are we trying to pick up the ball where the sheriff's department dropped it? I mean, you know, there's no, there's no answer, I got to, but it's just, I don't know. Any ideas?
I don't, I do not have any ideas. I feel like after June 6th, a lot will become, will come to light, I think, I don't, we really haven't had any conversation with it, we received the same type letter that you received, and that's, that's about where we're at with that, so I don't have an answer for it.
And that's a shame, that it's like we're, the information is a held hostage, we're being essentially emotionally blackmailed to take care of our children, and it's, this is crap all around, I really don't know.
Thank you, Commissioner Swol. To answer one of your questions, I did invite Chairman Glenn Adams, Cumberland County Board of Commissioners Chair, I invited him tonight, and he did not appear. So I was hoping that maybe he would have come, or he would have sent a representative, maybe to address some of the questions that are in the room, and the county did not send any representative to our meeting tonight. Any other questions?
When did the talk start to do this?
We got the letter last Wednesday.
That's the first anybody's heard anything, I mean, it didn't start back in the first of the year, and we're going to do this, I mean, it just like, he wakes up one morning, oh, I'm getting rid of this, it's thrown out to the day.
We had no, we had no forewarning that the letter was coming, we did not know that, we just didn't know, it caught us by surprise, it's like it did June. I mean, throughout the years, there's always conversations of how we can maximize partnerships, you know, but it's never really been specifically about pen to paper, I mean, this is a long, this is a very complicated process, obviously. So, you know, if there was any runway given, we would have used that, like we didn't, we didn't know, so we were on the 21st, that's when.
Well, is the county going to, if we do this as a community in Spring Lake and Fayetteville, is the county going to pay us to do that? Are they going to provide the money?
We don't know, you're right, you're exactly right, June 6th, I apologize for that, June 6th, you know, it might look completely different than it is now, my first thought would be how it is now, I'd have to get that, I mean, it could be completely different, it's going to have to be completely different, so all of that will be coming out June 6th.
The only thing that we are sure of is that if, for example, the Town of Hope Mills ends up covering Southview, Haysville, the state gives us that 88,000 to fund net officer, so that funding, we do know that we would have control of, but the state does not fund middle schools nor elementary schools.
And that's good to know, Dr. Conley, it really is, so we don't want piece of the funding that comes directly from the state, and it's a requirement to have an SRO in our high schools, so that's a good piece.
No, that's okay. My first thoughts on this, and we've got the letter, is these are county properties, county's responsible for hiring, firing, this type thing, why are they putting it off on us? But if that's the way it goes, I do have an open mind, and we'll do all I can to protect our children, to make sure we do have the proper security in the schools. I have two daughters that graduated from me, two grandchildren, and I have two great-grandchildren, so I'm very familiar, and I actually served on the old Hope Mills School Board before the city and county merged, so I've been through this when the police department and all covered the schools, and we had all the schools then, with the exception of Collier, so I am familiar with this process.
What has happened to all the money where people play, for the millions of dollars, or millions, two million dollars, the word I'm looking for, I can't, got more people playing behind you. What's happened to all that money? That's supposed to be school funding, is my understanding.
That money, that capital, the lottery money, goes into our capital budget, so it's used for like, specifically earmarked for buildings and capital process.
Well, they're talking about building new high schools again. How are we going to fund that?
That's at the county commissioners level, they would be the funders of that.
Well, shouldn't this start with the county commissioners? This funding?
The sheriff, by putting that letter out, put it back on, you know, the Town of Hope Mills, and we're doing our diligence as well, going into the, you know, going into that meeting that we're having coming up, you know, we'll make sure that whatever, whatever issues we have, legality, what we can and can't do, we're in the middle of trying to investigate that as well on our end, so, you know, we'll have more information on after that meeting.
Well, I hope it's all good information. Well, I hope it's all good information. I'm really glad that we have the school guards, uh, crossing guards and, uh, officers inside the school. But I, I just don't know how this is going to work out. I guess this might be the first amendment meeting, you never know.
Commissioner Lay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Martin.
I have a few, I have a few questions and I actually got some comments. First, let me say that I agree that the safety of the children in the school system, I'm a part of the, you know, county school system. I think that's a do, of most importance. But as a sitting commissioner of the town of Mills, I had to look at the business aspect of it. And at the end of the day, Hope Mills is a growing municipality. We're still a small town, but we're, we're growing, our leaps and bounds. And we, we can't keep up with the growth that we have now. So I guess, I guess some of my comments and questions would be, so the, and I know the answers to these, but I just want to put it out there. So the county school buildings, they're county-owned properties, correct? Do they pay taxes to the town of Hope Mills? Do they pay tax in the town of Hope Mills?
No.
Okay. So if we put SRO officers in these buildings, we're taking our taxpayer dollars, the taxpaying citizens of town of Hope Mills, and we use the taxpayer dollars to fund a free service to Cumberland County. Is that correct? Is that the way you see it?
Yes. Okay. Because that's, that's.
The funding would be at, on Hope Mills and so.
So I, I don't see how we can take taxpayer dollars and fund free services. We're already offering free services now to the schools that are in the town limits. Um, I understand that the county sheriff's office responds to calls there. Our police officers also respond to calls there. Our fire department responds to calls there. They respond to medical calls, they respond to fire alarms. This is all a free service that we're already providing, uh, to the county. I will go ahead and mention this too. Uh, and this is all, uh, trying to protect our citizens. But we're looking at passing the budget, just like the mayor said, and I think we heard it earlier. It would have been nice to have a little heads up before we started ended our budget process this year. So we may have been able to absorb some of this if we had to. But that didn't happen. It was thrown on us. We're looking at passing the budget Monday night for the town of Hope Mills for the upcoming budget year. In that budget, we've been going back and forth with citizens of the town, thus as a board. We're looking at a five cent tax increase right now. Just to fund a pay study that we, that was commissioned by this board or the previous board that was adopted by this board to bring all our town employees up to minimum standards, minimum standards with surrounding municipalities. That had cost us $650,000, costing us $650,000. Okay? That's what this board is looking at doing this year, is having to increase the tax. That's five cent just to cover the pay study and the cost of implementing that pay study. In our budget, there's a whole list of departments in this town that asked for personnel that our manager over there did not recommend because we don't have the funding in our budget. We're fixing to pass a $13 million, over $13 million budget. Eighteen, I'm sorry, eighteen, eighteen million dollar budget, which is the largest budget this town in the history of Hope Mills has seen. We simply don't have the funds to get into the SRO program for Cumberland County. I'm sorry to say it like that, but financial wise, money wise, we cannot sustain having to plug. SROs in the schools say, well, there's 100% funding for the high schools, 50% for the middle, 41 match. At eighty-eight thousand dollars for one police officer, if for the high school, eighty-eight thousand dollars don't cover the cost for us to hire a police officer. Because we had to furnish a car for that police officer, we had to furnish uniforms for that police officer, we had to provide training for that police officer. And right now, even if we could hire those police officers, we still don't have the time to do a hiring process onboard that police officer, correct me if I'm wrong, please, to you, and train that officer and get him out on the road on his own by this time of year. So that eighty-eight thousand dollars ain't going to scratch the surface to the town of Hope Mills. I appreciate that's there, but it's, it's, it, the math is about equal to what we would have to do. So my, my question, and I, I don't think there's any of the county commissioners here, but my question to the county commissioners is, and it's, how much money is allocated in the, in the town's budget to the sheriff's office or SRO officers? I'd like to see how much money is in the budget that's going to be allocated for the SRO program, SRO officers. And if there is money allocated in that budget, that money don't need to go to the sheriff's office. That money needs to go to these municipalities if we have to fund SRO officers. And I'll say this again, I do not feel like Hope Mills or the town of Hope Mills Police Department needs to step into the SRO program. Because once you get into them, you're never getting out of it. My other, my other question that bothers me is the county commissioners had this big push for this sales tax, uh, distribution, how they allocate it to municipalities. We lost 1.9 million dollars of sales tax revenue that we're losing. 1.9 million. If we had that 1.9 million, this wouldn't be a conversation. We'd be glad to allocate some police officers. Give us our money back. I know that I'm saying give us our money back, but I talked to the county commissioners. Rethink your process. Give us our 1.9 million dollars back. Because right now, we're, we're at a 1.9 million dollar deficit. Next year, that's going to be over $3 million. And we've got a town in the room and, and I, I don't understand the push for it. I don't really understand where this came from. I, I do feel like there is a shortage. I understand the shortage of officers. I understand the sheriff won't pull officers out of the schools, put them on patrol to protect the citizens. But guess what? We're short police officers too. We don't have the full staff. Our, uh, police chief is pulling detectives off the cases to put them out on the street to protect our citizens. Who's going to protect our citizens? So financially, I don't know how we're going to do it. I'll say that to this board, I'll say it to the county commissioners. I, I'm looking to any, you know, that's why we're here tonight, we're trying to get ahead of it. And I know it sounds like I'm kind of, uh, you know, upset or ill or whatever, but I just, I'm just making comments, you know? You take 1.9 million dollars of funding from us and then we get a letter in the mail, just like everybody else, that said, oh, by the way, here you go. So how many, and I don't even know, police chief may know the town regularly now. How many police officers are we going to have to hire? How many crossing guards are we going to have to hire? And also, again, our budget this year, we did look at, it has passed it, we did look at funding one firefighter and one police officer for next budget year. But we can only fund it for half a year. So how are we going to hire more police officers and do what we need to do? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner Marley. To answer one question, the county budget, I believe I, I've got this correct, has allocated $5.3 million for SROs crossing guards in their budget that they're about to adopt in June. That's, again, 5.3 million. And they send this letter out to us. And this disturbs me. As your department assumes responsibility for the schools located within the city limits of Hope Mills. As your department assumes, that is like a directive to our town. There's also to Spring Lake, also to the city of Fayetteville, that you are going to assume. There's nothing in here about funding, there's nothing in here about personnel shortage, there's nothing in here about figuring out a plan to keep our kids safe. It clearly states, as your department assumes. Well, I don't believe the sheriff, the sheriff has had authority to come in to any of our municipalities and tell us what we will assume. Commissioner Craver.
I know you're not going to answer, to answer this, but every property owner in Cumberland County, especially in Hope Mills, we pay county taxes. Part of that county taxes goes for education. Are we going to be relieved of having to pay that so that we can add it and pay into our Hope Mills taxes to cover the education? That's just a question that you can throw out there.
I would definitely.
In other words, we have to have money.
Absolutely. And, and, and just everything that you share, we'll make sure we share with the rest of the team as well, kind of for the school system, so that, that message will be.
And you know, this is what the open discussion is. As I said earlier, leadership's about courage. It's about taking on hard issues, having hard conversations. Putting it out here like Commissioner Marley, Commissioner Schoel, Commissioner Craver, and Commissioner Lay. And soon, when we open up for comments from the public, is having that conversation. That's what this is about, is how do we fix it? Because according to this letter, we shall assume. Go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. I had a couple of questions you may be able to answer. We'll, we'll see. If not, maybe someone in the audience will be able to. I'm kind of regretful that our town attorney isn't here because I had a question about the contract that they had. Now, from what I've read, that if they didn't notify about the change by the April 15 deadline, then they're kind of breach of contract. Where's the legality of that? And how, you know, why should we be the fault, you know?
We've actually, our, our school board attorney, we've discussed that. I mean, and we're, we're digging down that and ready for the sixth as well. But yeah, that, that July 15th is part of, of that and, and we're obviously well past that date.
Yeah. And then my next question would be, let's say worst case scenario, um, we refuse to, to provide SROs. Could we don't, we can't afford it, Spring Lake can't afford, no one can afford it, we don't have the manpower, we don't have the training in town. Why, why not go back to like COVID and do online schooling? That way we don't have to worry about SROs until we are ready for them.
The Joe, Joe statute actually says that, that, uh, that we have to remind school security and does not require a police officer. So school system has the option, as some districts around the state of North Carolina do, they hire a contracted security company. Uh, they most have an officer at the high school, but many have a contracted security company at middle and elementary. So the eighty-eight thousand does, does not say we have to hire a police officer. It says a school security officer, which may or may not be an armed police officer. But here in Cumberland County, we opt to hire armed police officers without budget.
Because they're going to bring a, you know, a security guard, a flashlight to a gunfight. I mean, so, you know, and again, that's why, why isn't online schooling an option? We did it for, you know, a year or so for COVID. How, I mean, if it takes us six months or so to get training and, and officers filled, why can't we do that as a, as an emergency option of online schooling? It's going to suck for parents, but it'll be safe.
Well, Commissioner, let me say that, um, student and SNAP safety is a top priority for our school system and our more than any. And in general, in general, we believe that our schools are safe for our students. Now, we have other things in place, uh, behavioral expectations, SNAP, visibility, other things beyond just the SRO that helps us ensure the safety and security of our students. So let me be clear, we believe that our schools in general are safe learning environments. So, um, and we don't have an officer in the building in all 86 schools at all times. But when the officer is not there, we believe the school is still safe. Now, if something happens, sure, something happens at any location, not just at the school. But in general, with the other things we have in place of SNAP visibility and all those other factors, uh, training for even the students on a strict behavioral. Uh, in general, we believe that here in Cumberland County, our schools are safe. So we would not feel that we would need to resort to virtual online learning if there's not a police officer in the building. Then we are looking at other possible options such as initial security. Now, we have the option to hire armed contract security as well. Um, the, the statute does allow us to hire armed or unarmed security. So what we have missing on the six with the sheriff and municipalities and the chiefs of police, all of us, we hope we may have to engage in conversation about where army, um, what is the state of affairs, what's the best plan forward for all, um, Cumberland County, uh, municipalities, the unincorporated areas. All 50,000 of our students need to be safe. And we hope that on the six, that joint conversation will help, um, make a path forward.
I have one more question. Now, okay, for the June 6th meeting, you don't understand that not everyone was invited to it. So controlling the audience, there's no public input. Um, I believe only the police officers, the, the sher, uh, chiefs were invited. So no elected, so that's not really discussion, that's a controlled environment where no one gets to discuss anything, none of the elected. So how is that going to solve anything? We're the decision makers, we're the lawmakers. How is that a solution? You're, you're just, I'm sorry, you're just a punching bag.
Yeah. I apologize. Absolutely. I mean, I, I fully understand what you're saying and, and, you know, our, our goal is we're going to do everything we can. Like I said earlier, we're going to do every, we're going to uncover every, you know, just do everything we can to figure out any possibility of how to, anything we can do to make our schools safer. We're really happy, well, we've invested quite a bit of money in safety coming in the upcoming school year. We've invested in weapons detection, not metal detectors, but weapons detection. We've spent millions on that. And that's going to be coming up in the upcoming school year. We've got, you know, uh, rapid, we have visitor management. When you go into school, you have to scan your license and it runs you against a, a sex offender database. And we made that investment. We've upgraded our cameras and we're using AI with some different things. So we've made some investments in security. And then when we get this letter, this is obviously, so our budget's done as well in, in those regards. But, um, but we've done a lot of things to make our schools safer. And we know that having a qualified person in the building is most important and having somebody there to uphold the law. So we're going to sharpen our pencils and do everything we can for the sixth from a school system standpoint. And just as we go into the sixth, kind of see where it falls after that.
Thank you, Kevin. Dr. Conley, you were spot on because the safety of our schools is not just only in the classroom, not only in the building. It protects our children and it protects our staff who teaches every day in those classrooms. I know because I'm one of them. And I can tell you the security measures of Jackgrip are sound. For me to go in, I have to go through the same identification process as anyone else. And I welcome that. I will say this, is that our SROs, they serve three roles. And these are the three roles that I personally witness and that many of the, the principals that are here in the school administration are here. First, they serve as a law enforcement officer. They are a law-related counselor. And here's the last one. They are a law-related education teacher. They are a law-related education teacher. That's the three fundamental roles that our SROs play in our schools. And I, like I said, Jack Gritt, I have witnessed all three roles with kids. Because the last thing we want to do, I know, I know this, Dr. Conley, because I know how passionate you are about our schools. The last thing that we want to do is kick kids out of school. That is the last option that we want to do. Because if we do that, then the child is gonna go into the streets of the community and do something different. That's the last thing we want to do. I look at this as an opportunity to community pleasing too. Because the SROs and the schools, if kids are gonna misbehave in the schools, well, guess what? They're gonna misbehave in the communities too, and it's about relationships. It truly, truly is. It's all about relationships. Our future of this great nation is in those schools today. And they will be the leaders that will lead our community and this nation in years to come. Kevin, how many schools are starting on July fifteenth year round? Do we have any in Hope Mills?
No, sir.
These are in the city or they in Spring Lake?
No. We've got a total of four. Miller is in the, well, E Miller is down the rim road. Chestnut on Skyblock Road, we lost on Ramsey Street. Well, there's, there's Ramsey, there's Middle and High, there's three locations.
And they're gonna start July fifteenth without any coverage?
No.
So I have talked with the church about this year round issue. And the church assures me that we will have, we will have a plan for ensuring that our year round schools have coverage June fifteenth. And may I thank you for talking about the role of the SRO and it's about more than just locking kids up. That school resource officer is just that, a resource in that building to support children and staff, primarily supporting our students as a resource. They talk to them, count for them, encourage them, have relationship with them. And in my former life as an educator, somewhere north of here, the model was municipalities provided officers in the school, in their municipality. One advantage to that was that the officers, that was out in Hope Mills. When you're walking down that hallway, that officer knows your mama, knows your grandmama, you know, and it made a difference. But the officer had relationship with the family and they live in that community. That was one positive of that model.
Thank you, Dr. Conley. Janser, you got something?
Yeah, I have a statement and a question. Myself and my chief, we have done several extremely deep dives on this since Tuesday of last week. I don't say the twenty first, I say Tuesday. One of the concerns that we have would be the increase or dramatic increase in call bottoms. Because if you go with private security, they don't have arresting authority. So our, our police officers will still have to come in. And so that is something where, and we understand the short staff, sheriff's department, short staff, resource staff, city fairville, spring, like we all are. And so I guess my question would be, with those percentages in terms of a hundred percent for the high school SRO and fifty percent tripling down, is that mandated by general statute? If it's not, could this yield something where, and I'm gonna echo what Mr. Marley's saying, once we start running these numbers with my finance director over here, breathing down my neck, when we start calculating how many offices it's gonna take to fill those seven schools? And once we calculate the percentage of the funding and the gap we have to fill with taxpayers' dollars, what, is there an opportunity for us to increase those percentages paid to Hope Mills? Maybe tap into the five point three million dollars from the county? So that if we agree to do this, because one thing I'll tell you about my chief, if we're asking him to do this, we're gonna have to give him some support. And if he's gonna do this, how much can we minimize the amount that we have to pull out of the general fund? To be able to pull this off? I'm very interested in the community policing piece. We have a very strong community policing program right now. And something you said is very important to me. We have an opportunity to possibly put our officers in these schools. And so that this kid walking down the street, he's seeing the Hope Mills officer. He's seeing him at the grocery store, maybe with his parents and the officer's kids. It's a funding issue. And so that's where my concern is, but that's where I think I'm asking, or at least seeing if we can explore some opportunities to bridge that gap, to minimize the amount of, of funding that we would have to pull out of our general fund.
So then the only funding that we control is the money that comes from the state for each high school, comprehensive high school. Now, I understand that the county manager, when we have to meet on the six as well, is totally up to the commissioners, what they decide to do with the funding that is currently allocated for the sheriff's SROs. Now, they may choose to reprogram that funding. They may choose to, then the school system, that funding for us to then contract with the municipalities. They may choose to fund the municipalities directly. We don't know. But hopefully on the six, we'll have more information from the county in terms of what those possibilities are for the existing funding, for all of our funding, all of our funding for SRO, elementary, middle, high, under the next state allotment, come from the county commissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Conley. Kevin, I have one question, and I'll come back to Commissioner. Let me go to Commissioner Legg.
Thank you, Mayor. Where has the funding come from in the past years?
From our county commissioners. They're the ones that have provided the funding through our budgeting process.
Have we talked to them again yet?
Yes, sir. We have, again, waiting for, waiting for the sixth on that meeting. It's the first time we've come together for that.
Have we spoke with Ms. Applewhite and Ms. Jackson about possibly getting some funding from the state?
Yeah, we, we apply for a grant each year. That, that four to one match is a grant coming from the state. And so there's four levels, four tiers. We, we have, we have to fund, we fund a portion of that. And so that portion where it says eighty-five percent, that's that money that's down there with that. We haven't spoken directly, you know, with, directly with that, but.
Are you gonna approach them?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we'll continue to apply for the state grant. The grant, you provide the grant for what you need. And it takes into consideration, like we're on level four, so it's a four to one dollar matching grant. And so, you know, we'll continue to apply for that grant. It's, it's coming up this summer. I'm applying for it again, and it's based on the level that we're at, what funding we will get. You know, what our needs are, we apply for the grant, and that's how the state provides money to us.
Well, tonight would be a good time to talk to them, I'm both here. Mayor, can we possibly hear from Ms. Applewhite and Ms. Jackson?
We will. Commissioner Legg, I'm just gonna cycle through the board and then suspend the rules and allow for some Q and A from the LA.
Thank you.
Okay. Kevin, I got one hard question. Probably applies to all three municipalities. Let's say that the three municipalities take on this endeavor with funding. Let's just say that's a big I and a big F, a big, big F. And then a year from now, a new sheriff comes in and we get a letter that says, we will assume responsibility for all the SROs and the crossing guards. Thank you municipalities for all your investment and help, but we're gonna take it back. What's to prevent that from happening?
Well, we're the customer. Vermont County School is the customer. And, you know, if you look at it that way, the law enforcement is the provider. So when we go through this, what we're going through now, once we get this set up and running, and then there is a lot of advantages. If, if money wasn't an issue and we could all do it, there's a lot of advantage for the community policing circle. But it's not something from a, from a school system standpoint. We're not looking to just go back and just go back the way it was. Once we go back, once, whatever work we've done, we want to honor the fact that municipalities and everybody's work to keep our kids and staff safe. And so when we go into the next school year, that'll really be on our school board to make that decision. And I know our school board, they're very, very vocal about this, they're very involved with it. Our senior staff and our, our staff and our school board will work together. But that'll really be kind of, we get a say in that. And so, you know, it's, that's something that we wouldn't, we wouldn't just go in. This is gonna be a lot of work. This is gonna be a lot of complicated issues. It's gonna be a lot of things that have to go into this that we wouldn't, we would normally do that just because leadership change. So we would protect those that are protecting us at this point. I mean, we would, we would honor the fact of, well, all the work and money that's been used.
I think currently with the sheriff's department, the school board has a yearly contract.
Yes, sir.
I'm just looking at it in two, a couple of different, different ways. Because this is a community investment on all three, Spring Lake, us and city of Fayetteville. And if we put our time and energy, as we should, because this is an issue that we've got to, we've got to do this one right. We can't have it. We can't go into this thing with if, should have, could have, with a bunch of question marks. We have to do it right. And we have to do it smart. And here's the biggest part of this, is we have to do it together. And that's why we're in this room tonight, is to start the conversation to do it together. This is our community, it's our county, these are our kids. Whether I got kids in the schools or not. My granddaughter is in Southview, she marches in the band line. My other granddaughter is in Hope Mills Middle. Thank you, Kevin. It's been an excellent presentation. Any other board questions? Mr. Marley?
I don't have a question, I just got a comment. I'd just like to, I'd just like to say that, I want to thank the school system leaders, Mr. Cohen, the superintendent, for coming out and not being the punching bag. I hope that some of the comments I made didn't offend anybody, and if it did, I apologize for that too. But I also like to commend all the employees of the school system and the school board for, you know, the effort you have for the security of the schools. And I know y'all spend a lot of money and time and implement a lot of security measures. It's noticeable. My, the job that I do, I, I used to go to all the county schools and do inspections and stuff. And I see those systems in place as well. So I just wanted to commend everybody for your dedication to the state to put your schools on that shore.
Thank you, Commissioner Marley. Do I have the consensus of the board to suspend the rules and allow further comments? And we will start with our Senator Val Applewhite and our House forty-five rep, Francis Jackson.
Good evening, Mayor, and members. And also for our school board, it's always a pleasure to be here with you. And it's a complicated situation we find ourselves in. And I think that all of you know that public education's always been a priority for me. And I've had the opportunity to speak with each of you individually and collectively. I think we have a lot of moving parts here. And one of the things I think is worth mentioning is that the sheriff's department, that's an elected body of its own. So people may not understand is that the sheriff doesn't necessarily have to sort of the county commissioner because people vote, right? So I agree with you, Mayor. What we've got to do is come together collectively to find a solution. I think this, the meeting on the six will clear up a lot of the angst that we have. You know, I'm not at liberty to really disclose all of the conversations that I have had, but I think we're going to be okay. And whatever I can do, as I spoke with you, I'm willing to go to the governor, I'm willing to go to the attorney general, who's the top cop in the state, to make sure that our children are safe. But I believe that we can find a solution here in Cumberland County. We have a large school system and the leadership in our municipalities and our school, our school board members. We have the right people, it's just a matter of coming to the table. I get the frustration, I am getting the phone calls, like, what's going on? I kind of found out about it when you all did. So I just wanted to let you know that I'm watching whatever, what happens, how this thing unfolds. And if I said to you all privately and publicly that I'll be willing to go back to the legislature with the rest of our delegation and get whatever funding if necessary. And if there's even any emergency ruling that could happen from the attorney general, I'm willing to fight that fight for you. But if you have any direct questions with me, I'd be glad to answer them. And if my, my delegation member, who's a school teacher, so she can tell you a whole lot about it.
Thank you, Senator Applewhite.
Yes, sir. I would like to thank you all for inviting me this afternoon. I'm sorry I didn't get back and respond sooner, my LA is sick. But I wanted to let you know that as an educator in the classroom that Senator Applewhite stated, we do need SRO for someone there to protect not only the students, but the educators and all the other employees. And I want to give regard to you all, thank you for inviting me, my boss, thank you for being here. But I just want to say that I spoke to Chairman Adams this afternoon. I understand that they are in the budget meeting, all the, he and the staff. And I didn't think that they would be finished by the time you all meeting started. But in my conversation with him, I don't think funding is gonna be an issue. It's the bodies that you're gonna have to have. I understand from him tonight in the budget, they're supposedly taking that money from the sheriff's department and they're gonna give it, a part of the school board's a budget based on that, according to understand. Now, from there, I understand, like she's saying, I think this is a fixable situation. It's a matter of everyone coming together and deciding they want police, community policing. They wanna contract with a third party contract. And all of that will be the decision, you've already thought RFP, right? So I think the RFP is already out there or he's writing it.
It's not, it's not out yet, it's been written, turning to talk.
Yeah, so tonight when I came in, I was like, I didn't realize that you were gonna have to hire anybody. But I really appreciate your proactive response, so. Thank you for having me, and I look forward to us resolving this matter, she said. In Raleigh, if we have to go and ask them for more money, I would do it, if we, if we need to do that. So again, thanks, and I'm sure we're gonna resolve it.
Thank you, Representative Jackson. Does anyone else that'd like to talk to the mic and speak for a few minutes? The only thing I'm gonna ask is if you can come up, is just state your name. Everybody lives in different places online, you're gonna ask for an address. Yes, sir?
I move a little slow.
Be one of them, I wonder how it feels to you.
My name is Ronald Lance. I live at five zero zero four Jefferson Wall Road. In the late seventies, I was a school officer. I was also a county police officer, John Carroll University. My school system was Cleveland Public School System. Okay? You put, I want you to understand that from right now, and the chief can tell you, if you wanna hire a police officer, you can't do it in three months. Not from the start. Okay? You have to put this out, you've gotta go for the testing, you've gotta do a background check, you've gotta do training. Unless you wanna pull. Unless you want to pull experienced officers off the street and put them in schools and put your inexperienced officer in the street, which, again, from my experience, is problems. Okay? I was also a police officer for Cary Hall County, Greater Cleveland, Michigan. And if I look at your list here, you're looking to hire between twenty and twenty-five police officers and thirty to thirty-five school crossing guards. You brought the great question. What happens next year or the next, um, period when you get a new sheriff? And he says, "Great, I'm going to take back to school." What are you going to do with those twenty officers? Because you've got them for twenty years, right? And you can't fire them. And putting one officer in a school? I was officer in the seventies, the late seventies, and it's a different system today. You put one officer in a school, especially in a high school, you're going to have a problem, right? So you're going to have to hire two and eighty-eight thousand? Two, you uniformly equipped one officer, that ain't going to cover it. And you go put two to four in a high school? You go put two in an elementary school? Where are you going to come in? I mean, do you know how much it is to hire an officer and keep him in the street? That'll count the car, you know, and your liability insurance. Now, trust me, again, I've worked in schools. I know what, you know, it is. And those schools, especially today, need to be safe. You need officers in those schools, okay? But my, my thing is, I would do this and then build this county. Our cost. What, what, what they are paying, we, what we are paying, build a county, okay? It's a service they neglect. They're neglecting their duty. This is a county property. It's a county organization. This is a county elected board with a county elected sheriff. They are not doing their job, right? And if they don't do the job, it falls to us in Fayetteville and Hope Spring Lake. Build them, okay? Because if we're going to assume the cost, I gotta raise, I'm on a fixed income. And you're going to have to increase my taxes, aren't you, to hire that many officers? You're going to have to, and I can't afford it. Right now, I consider myself a nonprofit agency because my entire check goes to Fayetteville, okay? So now you're going to raise my taxes? Where am I going to get it? And I want my, I want, I have grandkids. I want them safe, okay? Where are we going to get it? United States? Maybe get the state money, which my point is, you're going to have those officers for twenty years. Now, I don't know if the state of North Carolina is, the state of Ohio, schools have the option of forming their own police department. Maybe that's an option. I don't know. I don't know. I just heard about this last week, and I'm not too thrilled about this. Because I know it's going to cost you money, but I want the schools safe.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Patrick Mitchell. I live at thirty-six, thirty-one Lake Shore Drive, Hope Mills, North Carolina, two eight three four eight. I know most of you have been here for many years, since ninety-six. And so when I saw this issue develop, it's something that affects us. My children went here to school and, uh, so, and I do have a little experience in this field. So I see a problem, and there's a way to solve these problems. Uh, and, and I will offer my services and opinions and if I can, I'll help you with my direct, some, to go back to what they were saying about the armed guards. And I run a business, a security business. Seventy-four C regulates what we do, and, and it, it tells us that we cannot carry a weapon in the school. It also tells us we can't arrest somebody, but we can detain them. So there are things that we can do. In order to change that, legislation has to change that for us so that we can get enough armed guards in the schools. And in order to do that, we have a resource here with all the soldiers that are retiring, all the experience that they have. We know they will go to the fight. If there is a threat, they will go there, they'll take care of it. We, they've been under fire before. They're not going to run. They're experienced. So we have a resource that most communities don't have. And we can save money on this because funding a security officer, we don't have to buy them a vehicle, we don't pay their pensions. There's a lot of things that we're going to save money on. And then instead of just problems, where are we going to get funding? The ABC stores generate a lot of revenue here. They need to pony up and start paying some of that money into our security so that we can get revenue from other sources and get legislation that helps us fix this problem. And I would volunteer my services to help you. Of course, I'd like my business to be able to work on this, but, uh, I do, I would volunteer my service to help you negotiate this issue and this problem. Thank you.
Patrick, thank you for your services. Thank you for your comments, sir.
I'm there now. Really, Mitch, four zero five six, we're available to talk. When I first heard about this, the first question I asked myself, and I called one of the commissioners, I said, "What the mic is going on?" Then I said, "Show me the money. He who controls the money, control the rules." It's just a plain simple federal, state, county, client. That's the way it goes. Bottom line is, nothing, these kids are not going to be exposed if it's implemented right. You have a Sheriff's Department that was running this for years, they can help with implementation process if you have to go that way. And I understand the process why they did it. When there's a cut, personnel is the first thing you do cut. It's on the way to safety. It begins with you. Had to do it too many times. RFP, when I seen you post the RFP, I said, "Okay, the school got this." The question is, with the RFP process, we're going to have to make sure that we put the right individuals in those positions. De-escalation is very important. I worked in the school system for years. We had no RSOs at the court, right? I was the RSO, meaning that I was a hardcore teacher out there, and I handled those students, and they respected that. We just got to make sure that the implementation process is done right, done properly, so that everyone feels safe. The parents know that the kids are going to be safe. The teachers know that they're safe. Most all the kids feel and know that they're safe. The average age of a kid is committed to crime now between the age of sixteen and thirteen. That's why it's important. Thank you.
Thank you, girl.
Good evening, Lake Wood. Thank you, Mayor, and for allowing us to speak this evening. I'm, I'm baffled by this. I'm a business owner, I'm a community member, working in numerous community organizations, but I'm baffled by this, this situation on all parts. It's, it's a situation that should never be put on the footsteps of a local municipality. You're not responsible for, you're, the children are in responsibility of public safety when they exit a county building. But a county building has a county responsibility. I will say it's shameful that our school board and our county leadership won't answer emails. They won't respond to questions by parents. And I've heard it from numerous people. This is a situation that they are duly responsible for as well. And to hear them come up this evening and, and have a plan is, is, is okay, but there's also things that need to be worked out and that they need to take responsibility for. And I'll leave my comments at that.
Thank you, Lake. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak?
I'm here, Board, Marvin Lackman from Spring Lake. Thank you very much for, for taking the time and, and for, for listening to me. I appreciate that. You need to run the county commissioner. What you said was the truth. And we are here tonight because of a county failure. We're here because a sheriff made a decision that impacts the entire county. And we are spending time, you know, we just did our budget last night. You're doing yours. The county is doing theirs tonight. It is a failure on the sheriff to do this and to put this out at this short period of time that, that it's out there. But finally, when you said that our schools are safe, they're safe until they're not. And, and so this is a turnabout on our sheriff, as you said, trying to get a, a resource officer, get them hired, get them trained up to protect our children. It is just unfathomable. I'm glad we got the news here tonight to report this. Please put that out there, that this is a failure on the county's part, that the municipalities are getting together, having to address this. And I will go on record as saying that, that I was, as a law tax, you know, as a municipalities, we may need to readdress that collectively with the county as we go forward on here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to come forward with any comments? Any of our local school principals would like to comment of the impact that this had or may have on your schools? Or have we pretty much discussed it well tonight? Yes, sir?
Good evening. Uh, my name's Sean O'Connor. I'm the principal at Southview Middle School. Um, this is my first year at Southview Middle School, but I started teaching, uh, at Hope Mills Middle School about nineteen years ago. So I've, uh, been in this community or not this community for a long time, and I certainly appreciate all that you're doing to address this because it's a bad situation all the way around. Uh, I will say, um, the role of SRO in our school is, you know, you said it's a very multifaceted matter, and I think one thing that, um, is missed is our, our kids at middle school age and high school age sometimes feel like they have to have an adversarial relationship with law enforcement. Um, and having a law enforcement officer that they can trust, um, having a law enforcement officer where they can focus information, because information is what keeps kids safe in school. Um, when, you know, I know that, um, if Ms. Jackson was here from the high school, if Dr. Ackman was here from the high school, we know that their SRO and our SRO are hand in hand because we're, we're dealing brothers and sisters and families and people in the community. And so, you know, that flow of information is a really key point, um, for our local law enforcement. And the other part of that is, is Hope Mills Police helps us out a lot because, um, our kids live in Hope Mills. So when there are things that happen that we find out about at school that may have happened at home or online, which is becoming more and more frequent, Hope Mills Police is already helping us in a lot of regards with our students. So, you know, the idea of not having an SRO, it, it's not, it's not the end all be all. It's like Dr. Conley said, it doesn't make us unsafe at school. But having that figure for local policing, having that relationship with kids is invaluable to me as a school leader, and it, and it pays dividends in the community. So thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Well said. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward tonight? This is a community conversation. If not, I'm going to ask our own police chief for a few comments. If you don't, if you have anything you want to add.
Well, I, I do have, I, I have a quick comment. First of all, there's a lot of issues here that are beyond everyone's control. I think Senator Applegate pointed out that the, the, uh, the sheriff is an elected official. So there, therefore, he has authority that may not require him to answer through the board of commissioners other than for funding. So that might be why we're not getting a lot of answers from the, from the county commissioners because they, they might not have the ability to control a lot of this other than funding. I agree with what Dr. Conley said and, 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 um, the gentleman from the, uh, the principal there. SROs are more than just law enforcement officers. You know, you, you can, you can stick a private security guard in a school and you can get protection for the children. The SROs are, uh, important because they build those relationships and the bonds with the children. Here, because they're county schools, it's a missed opportunity for local municipalities and local police departments to have that relationship with the local students because, because we're not in a school, but that's just the way it's designed here. The problem probably is not going to be the funding. If, if I'm, if I'm catching everybody's, uh, between the lines here, I think that's probably negotiable, and it, and it's probably some things we can do to, to take care of the funding. The problem with, um, most of the law enforcement agencies, and I don't want to speak for everybody, is going to be the bodies to get them there and, and in what timeframe that we're able to do that, because this was dropped upon us at the last minute. There wasn't a whole lot of opportunity to plan. That being said, um, I think there's a lot of conversations that could, could be had to work out other security kind of things. And I spoke to, um, Mr. Coleman already about some, some things we often hear. So I think everybody just needs to kind of collaborate, work together, and, uh, look for those resources to fund. And, you know, if we all come together, it takes a village, right? And we can probably figure out some, some ways so that we can, we can get to a, some common ground and make sure, make sure everybody's, you know, kind of in a win-win situation. But that's going to require a lot of hard work, and, uh, everybody just needs to be willing to be patient with that time, huh? And I, I think we can, I mean, get, you know, something done.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, one more, one more round. Anybody else who wants to speak? Yes, sir?
Good evening. Now, my name is Mark S. Eleven. I'm a little more driving from Hope Mills here. I, I think everybody pretty much knows where you're here. But anyway, I work as a crossing guard. It's my part-time job for the Taliban, you know? But something we haven't addressed is you have to have, you have seven, seven schools, you have fourteen crossing guards to work two shifts a day. Uh, unfortunately, I've, I've worked two schools because they're short. And I think the staffing problem with that probably isn't as bad unless the standards have changed, um, because most of us are generally older, we're all retired, most of us are, if you just, we, we will all be put out of a job. If, if this goes through with the, with the sheriffs that we said they hired, um, crossing guards, you can probably hire the ones that they already have, at least most of them probably make that switch. And I look to what we've talked about tonight, I'm not real fond of just putting security officers in, not like a community police program. But if we get enough officers, I mean, security officers, that'd be a short-term answer, but if we get some officers trained up and they're assigned to the schools, even at elementary school level, they're going to get, uh, a lot more experience, one-on-one time with police officers, and maybe over a period of time, they, their attitudes for policing, the police officers as a whole, will change. You don't see problems, and I, Brian could probably attest to this maybe better than I can, you don't see problems with fire, fire, fighters as you do with police officers because they have a totally different persona. They're not, of course, very, but I, I think we're doing the right thing with, and if funding is not an issue, the only thing I really see is going to be training, because you can't hire and train police officers to work that job in ninety days. And that's what the problem I truly see is more than training. Like, you can train a crossing guard in four hours. You can't train a police officer in ninety days to take on that job. And I don't see where any officers from the sheriff's department are going to probably retire to take up a position if they already do it as a, a SRO. Thank you.
Hey, Mark, I have a question.
Yes?
What's the outcome if all the crossing guards are removed? What's the outcome?
I can ask my principal for Rockfish. When I was gone for a week, what happened?
Oh, my, um, well, I, I actually had to put a bet on myself because it wasn't that bad, but if they're even two minutes late, I'd have, uh... But if they're even two minutes late, I have fifty phone calls from parents who are in a line because it's going to get to trying to call and it's just, um, inevitably we will have an accident.
I was gone for a week, I heard nothing, sometimes I have a backup how they missed me. Sometimes you don't always send people to pick that much spot you want to do. But I know they had traffic sorrows, they definitely stood there, uh, for them, they have to move traffic, that's why they call traffic control. And most they didn't move. Cars out, hopefully they didn't. Parking lots, the parents dropping kids off or picking them up. And so they were backlogged. And the priority is such that as a crossing guard, buses are number one priority. And, uh, you get, you get death to the idea that humping horns are, I hear a lot of not-so-nice words, I mean, I'm not saying they're worse, but, uh, you have to be able to move the traffic. Depending on all the streets you're on, well, you know, normal traffic as well as, I mean, how the, the schools.
It's a big safety issue.
It is.
It truly is. Thank you for your comments, because just one week, you got to witness exactly how valuable his service is. Because you had to put on a vest yourself to be a crossing guard. Thank you, Marty. As, uh, as we've talked about, our school safety is not only inside the classroom, but the safety of our kids and staff. It is, it is outside the classroom. It is crossing guards. And I will, and I will even go further to say after-school events. Now, in August, we all know, football hits our local stadium. Oh, it's huge. We know that because we go to the game. So we've got sports events that occur outside the normal classroom time period. That's part of school safety as well. And in fact, it's a huge part, because there's a lot of things that happen at sports events on Friday Night Lights. And then we have other school activities outside the classroom. So this just isn't an issue inside the classroom, it's outside the classroom, it's around the school, of any part that that school connects. So we have to look at it in a holistic point as well when we talk about addressing this issue. And then that's why I say, and I strongly feel, this is a community safety issue when we look at our schools. And that's how we have to address it. Final thoughts from board members?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who came out tonight and those who participated. Mark, you're valuable to us and I know you're valuable to the school board. And I see people out there that I haven't seen for a while. Patrick, if you're one of them. Hate to call you out, but, you know, I just, um, what some of you are saying is right. We need to work together, but we can't work together without the proper funding. This would be simple if we had the proper funding, if we had the proper number of police officers, which we're, we're down on officers now trying to fill them, fill the slots. And we can't afford to take the officers off of the street to put them as crossing guards. I'm sure we'll work out something. It may not please everyone, but all we have to do is cover the areas that have to be covered. Thank you, Dan. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Lake, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Gray.
I'd like to thank all of you for coming. I feel a little bit more at ease now after hearing from principals and the, from all I've got, the crossing guards and security companies with that. And, and our House and Senate representatives, it makes me feel better. I was, have been really concerned over this. I don't want to see our students and our principals and teachers have to go back through a COVID event where the children are learning by themselves at home in front of a computer. I just don't know how the teachers, once we got them back into how they, how, if ever brought them back up, because I'm sure they lost a lot of time. Please don't let that be one of the options that we have. Let's keep our children in our schools, learning as they should, even if we have to all off the spool and borrow money from the banks. But thank you for coming and appreciate all of your help.
Mr. Swallow? Mr. Martin?
I don't have anything, probably just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and teaching.
Okay. To close this up, I think we've had a hour and a half discussion tonight about a, a very important community event, and we've done it pretty well together. Now, I know on June sixth, there's only going to be a certain amount of people that will be attending sheriff's meeting. And I'm, and the most, and, and the sad part is, the ones that need to attend that meeting are the ones in this room like tonight and the ones from Spring Lake and all the folks from, from the city of Fayetteville. I hope that, my hope tonight is that the discussion that we've had here will lead to good outcomes, good collaboration at all levels, at the, at the local level of the municipalities, at the county level with the county administrators and elected officials, and at the state level with our elected folks. You know, citizens vote every November to elect people to represent them. To represent them and the community issues that they endure every day. That's why we, those of us that are elected, are elected every November, just because we're elected by the community. And like I opened it up tonight, I will close it. Leadership is having the courage to take on hard issues, and this is one of them. I feel confident that we will solve it. I would like to Dr. Conley and the school board to know that you have our support as a, as a collective body of, of Hope Mills, that we're going to work together and anything that we can do to assist and be part of the solution for this school safety issue that we're, we're looking at tonight. I would like to thank all of you for coming and please enjoy a nice evening. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor? We are adjourned tonight. Thank you.